I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, it stands, one nation, under God, and with the will of the liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dankert, would you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Steem.
Present.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Present.
Councilmember King.
Present.
Austin.
Present.
Helly.
Present.
Hagan.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Enright.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number two, we need a motion for approving the minutes from September 17th, 2018. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Under awards and recognition, we have Mary Ann Wulewski and Tom, did you have?
Could you do number one with the addition, please? Adoption of the agenda.
Oh.
Pardon? Oh, okay. Did you want to?
Move with the addition.
Okay, with the addition, we need a motion for number one.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now, number three, under recognition and awards, Mary Ann Wulewski and Bonnie Rees are here. Yippee. Ladies.
Mayor Steem and councilmembers, nice to be here, and I can't believe it's been a year since we were here with, under the same mission. We're here to present the artwork that the city chose this year from the Austin Artworks Festival. But first of all, we want to thank all of you and your staff for everything you do for the festival. We literally could not do it without your help. We have the use of the downtown parking lot, we've, the outdoor stage, we have, we use banquet tables, chairs, park tables, picnic tables, street barricades, pedestrian crosswalk. We literally could not do the festival without. And then, we have a special thank you to Kim for those flags. Every year I go, "Dear Kim, could you please ask the crew to unfurl the flags?" Because the flags that go up in the wind are always getting caught. But we appreciate everything that the city does.
We actually have a long list of things that the city does, so we wanted to remind.
You're going to tell us about something the city does, right?
Yes, we are. Okay.
Take all the time you need.
Well, one thing is the approval to close traffic on Fourth Avenue Northeast and Third Avenue Northeast makes the whole event safer and more cohesive. And also, your history at this $5,500 purchase award, excuse my extra zero there, you've given that annually, and we just can't tell you how much that means to the artists. And also, this year, providing another set of judges, councilmember Janet Anderson and Steve King. You guys were awesome, and it looked like you were having a lot of fun.
Oh, yeah.
And also volunteering by the city staff. Craig volunteered, and we so appreciated Mayor Steem that you and Sarah came to the welcome event on Friday night.
I volunteered too.
Awesome, thank you. And also, the city's contribution of the $10,000 to our operations, a portion of that goes for the festival, and that just means the world to us. We're surveying the downtown businesses and about the economic impact, there's lots of anecdotal reports that we've been hearing, like, the busiest day ever in the history of the coffee shop. Anybody that was at the B&amp;J knows, you know, it's, that goes on and on. But our first estimates are over $306,000, and that's based on the arts economic impact calculator.
Thank you. So we want to show you your artwork that Janet and Steve picked out, and we'll, we'll speak into the mic here, but should we set it up there? It's a Vietnamese artist who did it. His name is Don Tran, and it's a talent that has gone through generations of his family. And it's embroidery work, silk thread on black material. And it's called "Summer Love," because you see the two birds here. And he's a fun artist to have. He's been with us since the very beginning, and he's very quiet, but it's, it's fun to have him because he sits in his booth and he embroiders, so people can come by, look at his artwork, and, and see, see how he does it. But it's very beautiful, and we were so pleased that he was chosen, because we love to have him coming to our festival. Anything else that you want to add, Mary Ann?
The only thing, he's such a joyful person, and every year, he's almost the first person to arrive in Austin, because he loves Austin. And on the back are all the lists of the awards he's gotten all over the country for his work, so you're really getting a high-quality piece.
Where is he from?
St. Louis.
He's from, he's, he's from St. Louis, Missouri.
Okay. Well, we're going to find a spot for it somewhere in here.
Yes. How, do you have an estimate on how many people attended the festival this year?
Well, we, we think that we had 9,000 between all of the week's events.
Wow.
So.
And this, it was the seventh annual, correct?
Seventh annual. We're looking forward to the eighth. And I think Bonnie and I also just wanted to thank you, because our goals are the same, about telling the story about Austin, why we want to live here, why we want to work here, why we want to volunteer here, and how important the arts are to making all of that happen as well.
Well, we, I think we've seen that festival grow almost every year, haven't we?
Yes, yeah.
I mean, did you envision it would be what it is now? And probably not done growing either.
Right.
I'd like to recognize Bonnie with the start of this festival in Key West, Florida.
Yeah.
And from an artist from, that originally grew up in Austin, Minnesota, Eric Anfson and her, I think, started the idea. Great idea.
It was a long time ago.
I think one of the things that I've seen from this is, you go to some of the events and you see all the people from Austin, and just all the different artists that we have in our town, that you just wouldn't, not only the artists, but I mean, in the past, like, books and things like that, you know, and it's just.
You know, Mayor, Tom, thank you for mentioning that, because one of the musicians met with me after, had a cup of coffee, and said, "Thank you to the festival for offering a place for local artists, authors, and musicians to perform." And we honor them. Our dinner the Friday night, we have a party where we honor and the local and the ones who come in. But yes, that's a big part of the festival. We want to have a place here where artists, authors, and musicians can perform.
Well, we thank you. It's, it's been a super success. I don't think anybody would have envisioned it, and like we say, it's not that bad.
Well, save the date. You can tell, you can tell people when the next one, the dates are.
August 25 and 26 of 2019. And it will be our ninth.
Right.
So that's amazing.
Eighth, eighth. And it's August 24th and 25th.
Oh, 24th and 25th.
It's okay, it's okay.
She's the number one.
She's planning for the next one.
Oh, I thought you meant the ninth in 20, in 2020.
Oh, sure, yeah. Oh, yeah, good save planning.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, number four, with, I believe, the addition, we need a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? I oppose number five, under public hearings. Five is a resolution, public hearing on reassessment of tax forfeited properties. And?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a note for all of these public hearings, we sent mailed notice to the property owners, and it was also published in the Austin Daily Herald. The resolutions set forth have the amounts for each different type of assessment, so there's tax forfeited, snow removal, they're all labeled. For the first one, the tax forfeited properties, those are properties that people purchase after tax forfeiture, and we reassess the canceled assessments through forfeiture. So these people have purchased properties and wish their, the assessments that were canceled to go back on their taxes.
How many, how many do we have under five? Just one?
For tax forfeits?
Yeah.
There are three different parcels.
Okay.
But just one type, yes.
Okay, so this is a hearing on all three of those. David, is that what we're, I guess, I don't recall.
Yes, that's correct.
It's the assessment rule, so you're adopting under number five, the assessment rule for those assessments, correct?
Okay, so we're just certifying it, right?
No, you're adopting the assessment.
Okay, all right. Council, any questions? All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody that came here tonight to address the council on this resolution, the resolution of tax forfeited properties? If not, we will entertain motions.
So moved.
Resolution.
Resolution, I'm sorry.
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven zero, Your Honor.
All right, number six is a resolution, public hearing on the assessments for 2017-18 snow removal. And do you, anything additional? Is there anybody, council, do you have anything you want to say on it? Is there anybody here that wants to talk to the council about the snow removal bill? Okay. If not, we would entertain a resolution on number six.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Seven is a resolution, it's public hearing on assessments for 2018 garbage and junk removal. Council? Audience, is there anybody, public, is anybody here that came to talk about their garbage and junk removal bills? If not, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Second. Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number eight is a public hearing on assessments for 2017-18 weed and grass removal. I don't, council, anything? If not, is there anybody here that wants to address the council on the weed and grass bill there? Okay? If not, we need a resolution for eight.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Nine is, looks like two resolutions, it's a public hearing on assessments for miscellaneous sidewalk projects. I don't think the council, if you have anything, anybody here to talk to the council about sidewalks? Okay. If not, we need a resolution declaring the cost of the assessment.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven zero, Your Honor.
Nine B is a resolution adopting the assessment rule.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second? Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Under 10, public hearing on assessments for administrative citation, 10A is a resolution adopting the assessment rule for park and rec. Council, anybody here for this? Yes, why don't you come on up to the podium, give us your name, your address, and what you want to talk to us about?
Amanda Gunderson and Jeremy Reese. Our address is 31021, 890th Avenue, Austin. We're here again, we were here last month, and we came again now this month to talk about the fees on 701 Ninth Street Northeast. We have caught up all of the snow removal costs, all of the lawn care and weed removal. We're asking that you waive the $1,700 in late charges or citations. This year, they said it started out new, where if you got one, and then it would double the cost and double the cost, so 100 went to 200, and 200 went to 400, and 400 went to 800, 800 went to 1,600.
So you're up to $1,700?
Yes.
In administrative costs?
1,625.
These are like fines for not paying the fine?
Correct.
Okay.
And this was a house that we had discussed a little bit last month, that went through a divorce.
Yeah, it was on a home that we didn't think we owned at the time, so. It's kind of like if you sell a car, someone doesn't transfer the title, but you still get the fees for the car.
Well, it's not exactly the same, because you got, they got the car, I mean.
Well, we gave up the house, too. They had it, we didn't. They told us not to go.
You own the house now?
We do now, yeah. And we've also paid all the fees.
Somebody owned it in the interim?
The bank.
So why didn't they get the fines?
That's what we're asking.
Who owned them at the time of the fines?
I don't think it ever transferred to them.
The bank never owned the property.
Okay, that's, that's my understanding, is they didn't own the property.
We have letters saying they did.
We thought they did.
We have, we have letters stating they did.
Who's the letter from?
Associated Bank, Wisconsin.
The bank, that, that, you say owned the property, gave you the letter saying they owned the property?
They did, yes.
You have that letter with you?
I don't.
Oh, we need the letter.
Yep. It was going through a foreclosure process, so they were doing the foreclosure and then the sale.
And they had, they had paperwork on the door for the sheriff's sale. The sheriff's sale and everything was going on.
And then paperwork was still on the door when we found out.
These things, these violations and stuff, they happened over a timely period. I mean, I, Kim, do you, do you have, who, who do you want me to call?
Kim.
Kim, she has the history.
I agree with you, and there was actually fees there that were, like, the mowing, you said, is $118 per time in the mow yard. Normally, it'd be like $40 or $50, but we tack on extra to prove a point, so people don't do this, so they mow their lawn. I get that, so we paid all of that, and we didn't gripe about that. We paid, paid it up, paid all the taxes for 2018, this, within two weeks of knowing when we got it back. Cleaned the yard, mowed, trimmed trees, we cleaned, we replaced windows, doors, soon as we knew, but as far as, this house was part of a divorce. So as part of the divorce, it was fought over for about four years. So finally, we just said, "All right, I give in, you can have it." And in that process, then, she gave it up too, to the bank. So, long story short, we are getting it back to fix up, but it does need a ton of work. We are fine with the work, we're fine with paying the mowing fees we already did, the snow removal fees we already did. It's just this 1,625, that's a lot to swallow, and fees on something we didn't know we own. If anything, if you want to charge them, I agree, but I believe the bank should pay them, being that they own the house through that timeframe.
Yep, you don't have the letter. Kim, have you seen this letter?
I'm not positive, I mean, I'm not in the legal.
David?
Well, here's the point, is I understand it, they instituted a foreclosure action, okay? They set a sale date. At that sale, the, the property's auctioned, and anyone can bid on it, including the bank. And I understand from your comments, the bank chose not to bid in on it. So they did not buy the sheriff's certificate.
Okay.
So the foreclosure was inoperative. There was no foreclosure sale. So the title to the property was still in the name of Reese.
And I'm guessing what your letter is going to say is, "In the event that this sale goes through," you know, whatever, and that didn't go through, I'm sure there's a stipulation in there somewhere, so, I mean, that's, council?
Well, it sounds fortunate that there was some confusion as to the ownership, because that's highly, that is not something that occurs very often, that the bank does not bid in. But maybe the point, they didn't bid in because they didn't think there was enough equity there, the condition of the property, and the assessments that have been assessed, you know, for these charges. So they just thought, "It's not worth it to us," they just let the property go.
And in between, yeah, letting it go and going back to the bank, the bank didn't secure it properly, if you ask me honestly, and it had been vandalized, inside and out and everything. So, yeah, so then the bank determined that they don't want it. It wasn't vandalized, and it wasn't in that condition when it was, when we stopped taking care of it.
We even mowed it a few months after that, until an attorney told us, "Don't go on the property."
I'd still be mowing it if I was you.
We did, we kept, we did, telling the attorney, saying, "Do not trespass, do not go on the property." We did it for about three months, probably, after the fact.
I think the problem was, is that these folks did not know that the sale did not go through, were under the impression that the bank did buy the sheriff's certificate, and therefore, the owners of the property. That did not happen, so they still maintained their ownership. That's, that's the confusion that these poor folks are suffering.
And I think, if I could, you know, it seems like these are responsible, respectful people, I appreciate the tone they're taking on this, and it does seem like there's some ambiguity, and a person of reasonable intelligence could imagine that there would be some confusion in whether the bank owned it or not. So I'm certainly willing to help the folks out with the total, total amount they mowed it. There's no willful intent to not mow it, it was confusion over who did own it. I get it, I think we're, I'm, I'm in the mood to, to.
How many say?
Waive the fees and let them.
Well, this, this, this is something that could happen in all these foreclosures.
Sure.
So, what I'm saying is, we have to go through the chain of ownership in order to determine
who is liable for those expenses. Someone has to be liable for the fact that they were not mowed, or the snow is not removed, and the city, at its expense, hired someone to do that. And it has to fall on the actual owners of the property. That's the ordinance, that's the law, and it, basically, the quote-unquote law.
But we did pay the expense for taking.
We paid all of the snow removal, the lawn care, hundreds of dollars, I mean, thousands of dollars.
But we have an ordinance that, that assesses penalties that are, that were put on the books and assessed, will be assessed, or it's up to the council.
And I'm just one vote, but I don't think the willfulness was there.
In this case, I think that would be vicious to apply a fine to these people, because I think they did everything they could in their power to get this done properly.
So David, are you saying we, as the council, can decide to waive these fees or not?
It's up to the council, but I, I suppose they can waive any fees, but the problem is when you start waiving fees, you set a precedent that people will come in and argue the same arguments they made, "I didn't know about this, I didn't know about the sale, I, you know, I did my best." Those, those are, certainly can be compelling arguments, as Councilmember King has stated. But the problem is, is that we have to take an objective look at what happened, who the ownership was with, and it's the property owner's responsibility to know if they own it or they don't own it. And that can be easily discovered by actually going down to the courthouse and looking at the real estate records. This isn't something that's a mystery that's hidden, that's what the records are for, you can go down to the clerk of courts, the court administrator, and the county recorder, and find out who owns the property.
But we owned it for how many years? Umpteen years up until this point, and there was no negative information, no fees, no fines. We own eight other rental properties in Austin, and none of them are past due, there are no penalties, there's no fines, there's no issues with them. There's this one, again, with the divorce, between two people, and then a misunderstanding with the bank and an attorney. We've learned, we would never do it again. If you don't want us to be a presence, look at all the other things we own and all the other properties, and how we maintain them, and we've been here twice asking for assistance. We've paid all the other fees.
We've owned it since 2005.
It's just these fines, I mean, when they, they say there's a new rule this year that everything doubles, that's huge.
You know, I, I believe every word you're telling us. I think you're sincere, I believe every word, but what the council has to decide tonight is, are we going to make exceptions? We're not saying, you know, "We're going to make an exception for you, but we're not going to do it for anybody else." If you're going to make exceptions, that's, that's the problem we have. If you're going to make exceptions, then you have to do it for everybody. And, you know, I think the council needs to understand that. We can make the exception tonight, but, and, and that's fine with me, but you have to understand what you're doing. I mean, we're setting a precedent, and.
I don't think that we're setting, I would think that what we're doing is putting us into a position where anybody in this situation could come to us and say, you know, ask for that, but that doesn't mean we have to grant it.
So, I guess what I would like to do is, is postpone this decision until we can see some communication from the bank confirming that these two would have had no way of realizing they didn't still own it. Because I think that's the kind of thing that we're not going to get hundreds of people coming to complain and showing us letters from the bank.
And I don't think many would show up to this point, anyway, if, in this position, they just plain wouldn't show up.
They don't have some, what, $1,700 that they have to bill?
Yeah, but we've been here twice, and we honestly, and I'm sorry, we didn't even want to come tonight in fear that we're just going to look like idiots and be told no and go through this.
No, 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 no.
So, it's very hard doing this, and, you know, it's.
Well, it sounds like the bank was going, didn't want the property, because they figured it was, wasn't worth anything, and you're taking your own money and your own time, your own efforts to fix it and put it, keep it on the tax rolls, and I think that's very important to consider.
You know what? If you could show us, if you could bring in the letter, I think we'd be.
Why don't we wait till after we have a motion or a resolution here, before we go any further on this?
What are we talking about here?
I think as precedent setting, yes, anything could be precedent setting, but this, I think, has a certain set of facts and circumstances that we can listen to and say, a reasonable person would, would waive this fine.
That's not a precedent.
I guess, the one, the one problem I have.
That's name, but also comes up, too. We take them one at a time.
No, go ahead, Jeff.
I guess the one problem I have is that you say you own other property, and this and that, so I think you would, of all people, would be a little bit more aware of ownership situations.
Yep.
And would stay on top of it, where the normal person might not necessarily, if I were, you know, I've owned one house for 20-some years, if I got a letter from the the bank saying they were taking it, I would assume that, you know, I'd read it through, maybe get a lawyer or whatever, but I guess I would make sure that the, the ownership transferred. And in all the, the emails and everything that I saw, I mean, you just assumed things and let it go at that. I guess I am of the mind, though, to waive these fees, seeing that once you did realize and figure everything out, you did take care of everything, you paid the, paid for the grass mowing and for the snow removal and all that, and are gonna be responsible owners. But I think in the future, I guess, you know, I would think that along the way, you would've stayed more in tune to what was going on.
I agree with you right up, and we did, actually. We did exactly what you said. We kept doing the lawn care through fall. I even sprayed the lawn again for weeds after giving it back, which, I know, who's gonna do that, but we did spray it, and we did snow removal right up until an attorney told us, don't go on the property anymore. That's what stopped us. Otherwise, we probably would've kept doing it.
Councilmember King, did you make a motion? No, I'd make the motion that we waive the fee for these individuals.
Okay, there's a motion. Tom? Do you have something to say?
Yeah, David, this has been published, and notice has been sent out to all the property owners. So what would the proper action be to remove that one and assess the rest of them, all in one motion?
That's correct.
Yes. Okay, now Jeff, motion? Can I get that again?
No, it's Steve's.
For Steve?
Steve's motion.
Was there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution, Your Honor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tom?
So a motion by Councilmember King, seconded by Councilmember Hagan, to remove the Jeremy and Lisa Reese parcel from the assessment rolls and assess the rest of them. So an "aye" vote is in favor of such. Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Helly?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay.
B.
Pardon, B. Ten B is adopting the assessment role zoning. Counsel, anything, anybody here for this, for zoning, any zoning violations? Okay, then we need a resolution for B.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Helly?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. C, adopting the assessment role fire? First of all, is there anybody here to talk about, are we gonna push this one extended or what?
I'd make the motion to move this one based on a prior agreement to allow the property owner thirty more days to October twenty-seventh, which puts us at our first meeting in November to decide if he hasn't completed the tasks and it will be assessed.
No, you, we're just gonna look at it in thirty days.
Table is done by thirty days.
Okay. Any other second?
Continue.
Can you make your motion to continue the hearing so we don't have to republish and everything?
Continue the hearing.
November fifth.
Second.
There was a second? Jeff?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Dankert. I suppose it's a resolution. Mr. Dankert?
All right, motion by King, seconded by Councilmember Austin, to continue the hearing to the first meeting in November. So an "aye" vote is in favor of such. Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Helly?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. And finally, ten D is a resolution adopting the assessment role zon. Anybody here for that? Counsel, anything? Comments? Input? Nothing? We need a resolution for ten D.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Helly?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Eleven is a resolution. It's public hearing on the assessment for hazardous housing abatement. Who's got this? Stephen, is this you or Holly?
Anne.
Anne?
Um, this would just be assessing a property that they knocked down, I believe, in 2016. We're just getting around to that now. So it would assess the cost that the city had for the property onto the parcel number and spread it out over those years. I believe it's ten years. Yes.
Okay. Is there anybody, public hearing, anybody here for this? Counsel, if not, we need a resolution for eleven.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Helly?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Twelve is a resolution, it's a resolution. Public hearing on the assessment for tree removal. Anybody here for this? Counsel, anything? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Helly?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Twelve is a public hearing for tree removal. Anybody here for this one? Okay, do we do this? We didn't do this.
Just get trees.
Sewer charges.
Sewer charges. Public hearing on the sewer charges. Is there anybody here for that? There we go. Okay, why don't you come up? We don't know if the council wants to say anything until after you give us your concerns.
Randy Pepper, 503 Thirty-second Avenue Northeast in Austin. Sewer assessment. I've been receiving bills from the city of Austin. No explanation how they came about that dollar amount. I don't know what it is, what it's about, or anything.
It's a, what kind of bill is it?
It's a, just a sewer bill. Unpaid sewer, sewer charges.
Have you talked to Stephen? Do you know anything about this?
So these are related to your connection to the sanitary sewer prior to having your water meter installed. We've talked about this. I think you, you connected to the sanitary sewer. I, I don't have the exact dates here in front of me. And then there was a period of time that you used the sanitary sewer without having your water meter installed. We, and so we inspected your property when the sewer service was extended, and then we inspected the property when the water meter was installed, and the gap between the two, you were essentially getting sanitary sewer service for free.
Okay.
And so that is what these charges are for, is that there was a long period of time there, it could be a year, eighteen months even, that is what these charges are for.
Okay, can I ask where the dollar amount came from? How do you reach a dollar amount without any, knowing how many units of water were used? And again, keep in mind that the water is owned in a well that I own.
Yep. The dollar amount is generated based on eight units per month. That is the standard average that is used for any home throughout the community when we, and statewide, eight, eight units per month is an average. So because there wasn't a meter there, we had to use that as our average. We used our current sewer rates and addressed that out over the period of time that there was no meter installed, and that's how the amount was created.
Okay, all I'm asking is, I talked with the utilities. They say they need a complete year until they can get a average for a home, 'cause everybody has different water usage. Myself and my wife, we both work out of town. We're rarely at the property during the week. We are there on the weekends. I would like to just get a true average. I'm willing to pay whatever I owe, but I don't feel that just an average out of nowhere is, is fair to myself and that property. If we can just get a true average from...
You need that from, did that come from us?
It came from us, yep. And our, so we've had other people that have asked that same thing, and my response to them have said, has been, had you put the meter in originally, we wouldn't be in this situation, and it would've been metering your water accurately this entire time. So because homeowners chose not to install the meter right away, it's created this gray area, so therefore we have applied the average to it.
The average is about as fair as you can be. I mean, it's, it's the average.
Right, I understand.
When did you first receive this invoice?
Uh, January, I believe.
Okay, so, so it's been a number of months that...
Right.
But you, but you did talk to the engineer's office about the average?
I did talk to him. I believe it was last fall we...
It's been a while since we spoke, yes.
And, you know, that's kind of another question, is why, why did it wait so long? You know, it was over a year from when you contacted me again about the meter. Why did it wait so long, over eighteen months, for you to contact me again to remind me that that meter needed to be installed?
Just, just through our tracking process, most, most people that took out a permit to hook up, installed the meter right away. So it was just worked hand in hand. There were some that didn't, and then we're, as we were backtracking that, trying to research it, see who had not installed a meter, that's, that's what created that delay. It was just, typically it happens right away with homeowners. Some cases it didn't, and we tried to track those down, and that's why there was that original delay. Why this assessment is coming now, when we spoke maybe last fall, we probably missed these dates. We do this one time a year, so it was probably after this time period last year when we were discussing this at one point, and that's why it's been almost a year that this is now being assessed.
Okay, I, it's been many years since this entire sewer progress started, and I know I'm probably one of the last survivors of, of it or whatever, but the communication has been minimal for homeowners throughout the whole process. Okay, we were told we had to hook up by a certain date. We fulfilled that. The meter, the meter deal, the first time I talked to you, I was aware, but you reminded me it had to be done. It was then installed, but there was that gap from the time I hooked in to the time you contacted me to kind of give me a reminder that, you know, why did we wait eighteen months, myself and you, to bring that to my attention again. And the photos that I sent you, I'm assuming those are the dates you're going off of hookup, obviously. Okay. I didn't start using that sewer till probably four or five months after those hookup dates, only because they had, they had to get an extra pipe, they had to reroute stuff, or whatever it was. And that was the last picture you received from me, the hookup coming out of the house. And that should be dated different than the rest of them, I believe. So I'm just, again, the average, your average, I think is gonna be different than my average at my house. I would just ask that, again, can I just get a true average for my property?
Seems to be that's the state's recommendation on the average, and that's what we've used in the past.
We, we probably sent out billings for probably ten property owners that had not installed their meter in a timely manner after the sewer was hooked up. All ten of those people, we used eight as the average. Some people maybe used more than eight, some people, like Mr. Pepper, maybe used less than eight. So that's, that's the pluses and minuses of using, using an average. It's gonna work perfect for some, it's gonna be high for some, there's gonna be some winners and some losers, and just, we just applied that to all ten for consistency.
We're talking three to four years. I understand if it's like six or eight months, you know, you, you take three to four years of that, and that adds up to, you know, or whatever, whatever it is.
What is it? What is your...
Eleven sixty-seven forty-one. And I just spoke with the utilities this morning, from the time they did the inspection to my most recent statement, my average is right around three or four units right now.
How many people?
Five.
How many people in your house?
Five.
Five. So you're at least average, I would say.
Yeah, she, well, we're...
Unless you got like a solar panel on your roof.
No, we're, we're below average for water usage. And that's, that average, again, was taken from May until, you know, September, I guess, you know, without even going through the winter months where you use less water. I use a lot of water outside for my, just yard work, you know, washing cars, in the summertime, you know, so my average is at three to four right now. I haven't gone through the winter months yet and not used that. I'm still gonna wash clothes, still gonna do dishes, you know, things, showers, things like that, but I think an eight is high.
Leave it, I mean, we need, we're gonna need a resolution. Any, council want to weigh in at all, or come forward with a resolution?
I'd make the motion to move forward with the resolutions as stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Helly?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Then next, under petitions and requests, fourteen is a resolution approving a senior deferral for Robert McGinnis.
Yes, this was a senior deferral that was applied for, and Mr. McGinnis met our qualifications under our city code, so the payments would be deferred at an interest rate of 4.75% until he sells the property, or he no longer qualifies for the senior deferral. So I would request that you adopt the resolution.
Counsel, anything? If not, we need a resolution for fourteen.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second? Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Helly?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Fifteen is a motion ordinance resolution reviewing an ordinance for special vehicle in the city. It says McKeeken, but I think that, Brian, it's a sheriff's?
Yes, Your Ma, Your Honor, this got pushed back to, tonight because of some changes in the original ordinance from the work session, and those changes were made to give it enough time. I don't know if it's ten or fourteen days were needed, and just asking the council approve this resolution or motions here.
Counsel, anything? If not, A is a motion for preparation. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? B is adoption for, and publication of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Helly?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. C is a resolution setting a fee for licensing special vehicles. Counsel, we need a resolution?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Helly?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Sixteen is a resolution approving the termination of a joint well agreement. Mr. Dankert?
I guess the city was approached by a couple that have purchased a property out by the airport. The city of Austin actually owns the property next door to the east of this parcel that was bought primarily with federal or state grants for expansion of the airport, the safe zone, whatever they call that. There, however, is a joint well agreement between the parcel we own and the parcel that was recently purchased by somebody else that requires or lists out the city of Austin being responsible for half the cost, half the maintenance, et cetera. And we've been approached by the new owner of the property, because the well actually sits on their property, to see if we would get rid of that, terminate the agreement such that they would have clear title to it. So we worked with Holverston's office, and they drafted a termination of joint well agreement, which in essence terminates our rights in a well on somebody else's property.
Sure we have, that we have no interest in.
What's that?
That we have no interest in.
We don't want to pay any more fees.
We're not gonna use that well at some time.
We're thinking we might to water some grass.
Water the, water the, water the airport?
Counsel, anything? Any input? If not, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Helly?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Seventeen is a motion approving a revised paid-on-call firefighter policy.
Mayor and counsel, before you is a revision to the policy for paid-on-call firefighters who are also full-time city employees. As you can see in the attachment, item number six would be taken out of the policy. It's no longer necessary that we have an employee sign an agreement for the way that they're paid as a paid-on-call firefighter, and then there is a partial sentence taken out on number five.
Counsel, anything? If not, we need a motion.
So we only currently have one city employee that's a paid-on-call firefighter?
We currently have five. We have one that was under this policy as it was adopted earlier this year.
Oh, okay.
And so the other, they'll continue to be paid that they, with the policy they were under when they were hired. But this will be for new ones going forward.
Anybody else? If not, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eighteen is a resolution approving a contract with SEH for Phase Two of the wastewater treatment plant study. Mr. Wang?
Uh, we completed Phase One of the study, which was to evaluate our existing equipment, our current flows and our projected flows. We, we completed that about a year ago, and now we feel like we have enough information, and we can move forward with Phase Two of the study, which is really getting into the nuts and bolts of what improvements need to be made at the wastewater treatment plant in order to comply with MPCA requirements. So with that, we would recommend extending a contract in the amount of ninety thousand dollars to SEH for Phase Two of the facility study at the wastewater treatment plant.
Counsel, anything? If not, we need a resolution for eighteen.
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Helly?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Nineteen is a motion approving check-mole in to the Port Authority Board, term expiring December, December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Counsel, anything? If not, we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Twenty is a motion appointing George Bass as an honorary council member. I think most of the council knows Mr. Bass. I've talked to Jeff, didn't, but I think he's gonna be fine. The people that know him will be.
So what is Mr. Bass's background?
Mr. Bass, I think he came...
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Austin, he works at Riverland in the finance department.
Yeah. I don't know what, exactly what he's done before that he came. I think he came to us from Chicago, but I'm not sure.
He was up in northwest Minnesota.
Flat Minnesota, okay. Anybody else?
So, I move that we approved George Bass as an honorary council member. So, I move that we approved George Bass as an honorary council member.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Twenty-one is a resolution declaring the property at 209 First Avenue Southeast a structurally substandard building. Holly?
Your Honor and council members, as we look at different areas of the city and try to work on redevelopment projects, we're finding that some of the current, or some of the previously blighted properties that we have removed have created a situation where it might make it more difficult for us to develop a TIF district in those areas. So upon finding that the HRA had plans to purchase this property and demo the property or demo the structure, we looked into opportunities we might have to preserve that property as a, to be included in a future TIF district. So there's no current TIF district in the area, only hoping to have some redevelopment in the future. So at this time, the council would need to make findings that this property is structurally substandard. The parcel, that the parcel meets that statutory criteria specifically being occupied by a structurally substandard building, the finding must be made prior to demolition and clearance of the site. The, there's a time limit of three years before the length of the TIF is impacted.
Counsel? Craig?
Mr. Mayor, members, just one, a few other items. TIF is our most advantageous tool for redevelopment, so preserving this is very helpful in that regard. What the state tells us as far as TIF law is concerned is that we'd really leave the structure standing. Before we would tear it down, that would preserve our options for the longest amount of time. I think as members know, this property is in dire circumstances, so this gives us the benefit of going ahead and tearing the structure down, but being able to hold that open for at least a little bit longer window if we're able to do some redevelopment in that area. So tries to strike a happy medium between functionality of cleaning up the blight while also trying to preserve the TIF availability on the property.
Counsel? If there's no additional input, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Helly?
Aye.
Hagan?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Enright?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Twenty-two is a series of motions granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at a 111 Fifth Street Northwest at Tracy property. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? B, 1304 10th Street Southwest, the North Stire property. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? And finally, C, 1303 Oakland Avenue East, Ellis property. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Any, is there anybody? We're done with our formal meeting. Is there anybody here tonight in the audience that wants to talk to the council about anything? Anything? I don't care if it was on the agenda or not. If not, we're to report some recommendations. Paul, let's start with you tonight.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Dave?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Laura?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Janet?
Just one item, the Mayo Clinic documentary, Ken Burns' Mayo Clinic documentary, is going to be shown again on KSMQ, our PBS station, so you can check their listings if you're interested in seeing that documentary.
Dave?
Thanks.
Jeff?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Dave?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Judy?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Craig? No, and I don't believe we have any staff reports either.
Really? Well, okay.
It's up to you, man.
It's up to me. I'm going to punt, we need a motion to adjourn till Monday, October 15, 2018, at 5:00 in council chambers.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Okay.
They got a short break and meeting, oh, whatever, across the hall. Room across. I hate this. I'm always tired of this. I hate it.